Good evening, one and all. Tracy, take a roll, please.
Harrington?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Pollack? Smith?
Here.
Wason?
Here.
The agenda is before you. There are no additions or deletions, so move to approve would be appreciated.
So moved, Mayor. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 I'll oppose. Motion carries. Mr. Hayer, this is your portion.
Thank you. Tonight, I've invited several department heads back for round two of our budget discussions to focus on on capital projects. That being said, just to recap briefly, we accomplished a lot at our last meeting, I thought, and appreciate everyone's participation and feedback in that. I did want to point out one correction that we made since that last meeting, and that's in the the general fund section under the summary. We just corrected a couple of numbers in the fund balance allocation policy line item that reflect, so then that has a positive impact on the on the general fund balance there projected year imbalance both in 21 and 22. Other than that, the the operational side of this document remains the same as what you as what you saw last week, just a week ago. So tonight, I've highlighted a few projects in the CIP that we really didn't, that we did not talk about last week and that are not included in the operating budget that we want to have some further discussion on. And then assuming we can come to a consensus that will conclude our our budget discussions and then Tracy can start putting the documents together for publication and ultimate approval by the city council. So we will jump right into this, and I would like, before we get jumped to the CIP, I just want to call your attention. Again, this is a page that was in here last week to the general fund balance policy allocation page. The the projects there, one through seven that are in blue, are all included. That money, at this point anyway, has been allocated in the general fund discussion we had last week. So if there's a change of opinion on that, or folks want to go a different direction, we need to know that now. That being said, assuming that stays the same, there's just under $400,000 in that general fund allocation. The general fund surplus, we'll call it, from FY20, that can be allocated to a project or a program, which will lead us then to our capital improvements discussion. So be thinking of that as we're having these discussions. Because at the end of the day, we can say we want to get this done or that done, but we need to have a revenue stream. And so that'll be a lot of our our discussion, I suspect, tonight and into the future. So with that said, I'm going to just flip right to the FY22 CIP page that was included in in the packet. And for this discussion, I'd like to focus on the highlighted the projects that are highlighted in a tannish color, if you if you have a color. Kathy, on your on your computer or printout. Though these are the projects we didn't have a chance to talk about last week and that we need more direction on from the group. Take one step back, a couple of these, we we talked about in December, the first two we'll talk about tonight. I just want to touch base on those to make sure we're going in that in the right direction. I'm just going to go right down the list in the CIP, and and we'll begin now, and stop me if you have questions. And the department heads, certainly, if you have something to add, chime in so that we can, so that we can have a real robust discussion here. The first two are in administration. It's the administrative campus design and the comprehensive plan update. Again, these are funded, at least initially, with the surplus we have. And we are, obviously, later tonight, you'll be asked to move forward with the design. And then Russ is working on bringing that comp plan proposal in front of you here, hopefully sometime in the next couple of months. So I know we've talked about these already. I just, I want to throw them back out there to make sure we're all on the same page here. So we're moving forward unless we hear differently. So I guess, are there concerns, questions, comments on on those two projects?
Okay, on the design, now is that being exclusively dedicated to the area that was previously looked at before by the police station?
Yes, sir.
I always wondered. One of the big issues that's been brought up by counselors in the past has been whether we own the property or not, which, one city hall where you're at now, we would have to buy it. And the thing is, if we look at land that we already own, and maybe accomplish a couple of things, is that could we not look at the west end of Pen Meadows Park? It's relatively vacant. You got land to use there. If we have to move the trail, we can move the trail. That's no big deal. Also, if if we do that, parking for ballgames and all could be helped because if we have additional parking facilities there, that could be the overflow lot for ballgames in the sector. Now, the ground mechanics, I have no clue about, but that seems like something that if we already own the property, it may be a viable place to put it.
We own the property by the police station already, though, right?
Right.
There'll be a parking lot there, so people can walk across the street and park there as well for the ballgames. It just seems that maybe we'll have some economies of scale hooking into that other building with the PD if we can get the city hall all together, and it'll all be in one spot, which I think is probably going to be preferable than having staff still running across the street back and forth, so.
I'm kind of with Brian on this one as well. I think we've got space already planned out to go on to the PD, and we can go vertical with both of those buildings if we need to in there, and then also not use up any of that park space if we can help it over at Pen Meadows.
Mayor, one thing I've seen over in that particular area, that's kind of been a swampy type of area. Now, maybe it would be less expensive to do the work there and not have to do so much underground water retention basin with the new design over by the police station. You know, that you bring up a good point. The parking would be shared if it would cut out, you know, closer to a million dollars of not having to have that underground space. I don't know. Certainly was worth bringing up.
I would have to agree to, it was worth bringing up, but I'm also in favor of, like, keeping it along near the police station and having that civic campus where we can build up as well.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is, let's stay the course, and of course, we'll, we have that agreement on on the agenda later tonight, so we can certainly have some more discussion on it from a budgeting standpoint. We'll, we'll keep that funding in there. Any comments on the comprehensive plan?
I will just tell the council upfront, I don't like the sight to where it's going. I have never have from the very beginning. I think it's going to be tough footprint to fit to fit the property, but that's something that Kevin's going to be on the hook for. Go ahead.
Anything on the comp plan? We'll move forward with those. Next up, we have Chief Platts here to talk a little bit about an off-road brush fire truck replacing an existing one, and I'll just turn it over to Brian to to fill you in on that project.
Good evening, everyone. This this truck is currently a 15-year-old truck, and it serves primarily as an off-road use brush truck. It's in the form of like an F-550 or heavy-duty pickup, four-door, with a flatbed on the back, compartmentation, 300 gallons of water with a pump and hose. Like I said, primarily used for ditch fires, field fires, grass fires, wildland kind of type stuff. But we also do use the truck for, well, actually, days like today. Excuse me, we have a couple of medical emergencies today. We had to split up, and that truck would have been really nice to use. Unfortunately, it's out of service right now due to some pretty significant repair issues that we're contemplating, but but it's good for overflow calls if we have bad accidents on the interstate when it's icy. Anytime we don't have to put a large, high-dollar piece of equipment on the road, we'll use this truck just for hose line protection. We're going to do an extrication work. Any storm-related type calls, this truck goes out. So it's not just a grass fire truck. It does use, get used quite a bit throughout the year. In fact, I looked back today, and into 2020, we used this truck 73 times. So it does get some use. The current truck that we're operating has has, it's definitely seen its life. It's having some mechanical issues, some significant reliability issues. Right now, we're staring at about a $6,000 repair bill, and we have grass fire season coming up in a couple of months. So and then there's a number of other items that are wrong with it, items that would require lifting the cab off the truck that I'd really not like to do. So I say all that to say that it's time, and, you know, we we put this in the replacement schedule three years ago for now, knowing that it was probably going to be time. So that's it in a nutshell. Certainly entertaining. Questions? If anybody's got anything for me?
Want to take it? It's a crew cab, diesel?
Yes, sir. Yep, it's a four, four, four-person cab, diesel motor. Yep.
Okay. Four-wheel drive.
Is it a four-wheel drive right now? Absolutely. Okay, okay. Unfortunately, the way the truck is, was designed, it's got dualies on the back, which are not very good in a field. In fact, this thing's been towed out of probably more fields spent in. So the next truck that we get will have big floater tires, and it'll have some high clearance so that we can actually use it for the intended purpose.
Or do you want a tow truck?
I'm sorry?
Or do you want a tow truck?
How do you, what, I'm sorry, Terry Wood. I'm not catching you. Okay, I thought it was something about a tow truck, and we've
Exactly. Would you rather have a tow truck?
No, please, no.
Chief, do you have this spec through your committee where it could be a quicker purchase and be here for grass season?
Um, we've looked, actually, about a week ago is when we've been notified of this issue that we're dealing with. And we did reach out to a couple of vendors that do have some stock trucks that are available, but to be honest with you, they, they're just not quite what we're looking for. Either the cabs are too short, or the compartmentation's not what we're looking for. I think in order to not only do it right for the long term, as far as put time towards this and spec it correctly, but also, this truck needs to have some resale value, and as it sits right now, it really doesn't until we get it fixed. So I think getting it fixed for not only the resale as well as the springtime grass season allows us the opportunity to then back up and dedicate some thought process to truly exactly what we need and what we want.
What do you project resale at?
That's a great question. I haven't really looked into this particular truck, although I do know that the diesel motor that is in this thing was a, was a partnership between International and Ford, and it is the reason why they split ways. It's not a very sought-after motor, very problematic, and so I think that's what we're going to have to contend with. It's the age of the truck. It doesn't have a lot of miles, but it's just, it's, I mean, it's a fire truck, and it gets, it gets used extensively. So I wish I could answer that, and that's something I'm going to have to start exploring.
I would assume a truck. I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead. No, I was going to say, I'm assuming a truck at age, by now, they've probably discontinued making that anyway. So you would, the cost of continuing to repair that instead of replacing it will be a lot more expensive than just purchasing a new one, correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly a number of things we can do to get this thing where it needs to be so that we can use it until we get the new truck. But just from the long-term viability of it, it's just, it continues, we continue to have problem after problem with it. Right now, the steering's not right, and we've taken it in three different vendors, and everybody tells us it's fine, but it just doesn't steer right. Like I said, there's an oil, oil leak that we're told that we have to take the cab off the truck in order to fix. I'd rather not do that, because I know that's going to be really expensive to repair. So if if we can get the coolant leak fixed and sell it as is, that's kind of where I'm at with it, and I think, you know, we can then use it to get us through until next fiscal year. Chief, I'll admit, this is one of the items on this list that I was, I needed to dig into a little bit more here. I'll, I'll tell you guys, I'm kind of struggling with the projects that we need to and capital that we need to come up with here. This is quite a list to get through, and I think this is, for me, going to be something that I'd like to try to wait 12 months on or another budget cycle, and it would be a maintenance hog, and it has been, it gets us by. It's $270,000 that we just wouldn't have to borrow for right now out there. And to to put all my cards on the table here, I think of the list of things that we would like to do, whether it's improvements at Pen Meadows or at Centennial. I think the, I see this as a, there are a lot of items like this fire truck on this list that we have right now that we may just need to figure out how to use or get by in other cases for the next year. There, there's one project on that list, though, that we just don't get to use Centennial Park at all until it's completed. So I'm trying to rally my resources right now in my budget to get that road constructed somehow at Centennial and pull things back off of the budget in order to to do that. So we've got a park out there that's constructed, but we, it's like having a house that's built with no windows in it, and you can't heat or cool it. So I'm, I'm trying to get myself, I'm trying to figure out a way to make that work first, and an item like this, although there's a compelling reason to replace it right now, I'd like to try to figure out how to just make this work for another 12 months.
Chief, what's the lead time to build this?
Um, I think we're talking anywhere from six to eight months.
And so that's a build time, and then it's going to take you guys a while to get it, figure out what you want.
Yeah, um, you know, if we were to greenlight this, we would get to work right away. So, I mean, as we entered FY 22, we would know by July what what that looked like. That was our plan. But, yeah, so that, that, I don't, I don't anticipate a truck like this taking a lot of time to design and spec. Obviously, the build time is going to take, you know, a good half a year to a little bit more.
Is there, like, required down payments and stuff when we, you know, put in, you know, our specifications on one of these vehicles and say you got to build it?
Um, not necessarily. Typically, you can buy on delivery, but you can also save money if you buy at the time of purchase or at the time of order. Typically, the, whatever the percentage costs are, that the interest costs, that the company would save. So there is a little savings if you pay for as you order, but certainly you could pay for upon delivery.
And traditionally, we've paid upfront because it is a savings and we have the cash on hand. I would also note that it does, in this CIP document, we're showing 270 from a general obligation. As I noted in my memo, you know, again, depending on what we do with with the general fund surplus, there's some funding there. Also, there is some funding in the capital, fire capital. I'm not sure there's enough to pay for this in its entirety, and it would significantly drain that fund. We, we were kind of waiting to see what this year, the current year we're in, how that impacts the the capital fund. So there might be some options there, though, to to bring the cost, at least directly to a GO bond, down a bit if if that's a concern.
Brian, don't we have a, or Chief, maybe either one of you, don't we have a fire truck in the CIP a few years from now that we're hoping to kind of transfer some of these fire capital funds into, or am I mistaken?
We do have one, we do, we have a couple of trucks scheduled, I think, in FY26. But Chris, to be honest with you, the, one of them's over a million bucks. I mean, it's, we're going to have to borrow. For those, I don't think there's, I don't think it's, I don't think it's realistic to say we can start saving money for that now unless we want to drastically change our our general fund operations to start setting that money aside now.
Right, and I think that's just goes to wanting to maybe preserve that capital fund as much as we can for in the, for the fire transfers right now. So if we're going to pay for it this year, I'd prefer for it to, well, I'll leave that nuance at the very end. I haven't quite collected a consensus on how to proceed with all these items anyway. So just my thoughts for right now.
Yeah. So Chief, do you think that this vehicle that you have now, when you get it fixed, could last until July of next year? Because it'll have to last at least probably March of next year, anyway.
The concern I have is the oil leak that we have, that we know about, it gets worse. And then we have to remove the cab, and we have to repair the truck. It looks like right now with this coolant leak, in about two and a half years' time, we're spending roughly $12,000 to to keep this thing on its wheels. And that's outside of the, the, the oil leak, and we have turbo issues with it. The turbo engages half the time. We're not exactly sure why that is. We believe that may be related to the coolant issue, but there again, vendors have been unable to tell us why that's happening. It's just a very unreliable vehicle. Can we make it work? It might hurt, yeah. My, my concern is the safety of responders with regard to driving it, you know, with the steering, the way it is, those kinds of things. I just don't want to have a bad day. But, yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's the direction we get, we're going to do everything we can to to keep it on the road and and use it how we need to use it. If that means we don't have, we try not to use it as much, then we'll have to make those difficult decisions.
So because of, you know, you kind of inherited some older equipment when you got here and and stuff, even though it's been pretty well-maintained, things just, these vehicles wear out. And so it, you know, really, from a practical standpoint, if we do this, you may delay another truck, like, the next engine a year. Are we in a position, are we in a better position to do that than to try and make this one limp along another year, I guess?
Yeah, I think the next engine that we, that is in the CIP is for a second facility. So, you know, obviously, that engine is dependent on when we build the facility. If we don't, if we don't build that in the year that the CIP currently indicates, then we, we don't have room to put it anywhere. So that's exactly what that's for. So I think the next number of purchases with regard to trucks, both the engine and the aerial replacement, are directly related to the next facility, a second facility. We can't put a platform ladder truck in this facility. So, you know, depending on how we navigate that path, that'll also then provide us a maybe a clearer timeline of when we buy those trucks.
What's the consensus here, folks?
Do you want to go, I want to hear the rest of the things, because this was on a maybe to-do list.
Yeah. Any further questions for Chief Platts on on the, on the truck?
Thank you all. Appreciate the questions.
Thanks, Drew.
Okay, so moving on to parks, you'll notice there's a number of projects highlighted here. And then you'll notice there's a circular, half-circle arrow next to a handful of them, and if you didn't, if you didn't catch the coding there, that is a, we're calling those holdover projects from last year. These are projects that we talked about during the FY21 budget. The pandemic hit, we we hit pause, and at that point, we didn't have a, a funding source in mind. Anyway, we were going to come back and talk about those. We didn't, and so we are here tonight to, to talk about those. I don't know that I need to spend a lot of time on each one of these. Obviously, there's a couple of projects in Centennial Park, including the road that Chris just alluded to. Pen Meadows Park includes some significant projects, including rehabilitation of our current parking, adding new parking, ballfield lights, tennis court overlay. And then, and then the last one here is repairs to the Forever Green Road Trail, which we would consider a safety concern, as I noted in my memo. This is one that gets, has a lot of standing water and erosion issues, and we need to make some corrections on that. So I think I'll leave it at that, Guy. I don't know if you have any opening comments, and then I guess we're, we're looking for some, some discussion consensus from the group.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Ryan, you summed it up pretty well. I'll take any questions if anyone had have a particular question on any of these items.
Okay, Council, I guess I'll kick this off if you don't mind.
Sure.
As we have discussions in parks, I come back to the franchise fee discussion, and my line of thinking here is for this, for this fiscal year discussion, we need to fund these projects that we deem necessary. Then we come back to the nice-to-haves after we've had the franchise fee discussion, because I think that there's a fair amount of consensus that if a franchise fee is looked to, that parks would be the major recipient of those funds. I think that after we have that discussion, it either makes the decisions easier because there's a funding stream that helps take some of this out of here, or it makes it harder to pare it down because we decide not to do that. I agree with Chris. My view of Centennial Park has been the, I was very close to what Chris said. I don't view it as the house without windows. I view it as a, a shell of a house that the contractor just hasn't come back to do final checklist, and we really can't use it. We had a conversation about the, you know, putting in the infrastructure first, and we have to do that. That road has to be in before we're able to do anything else. None of us like that high price tag of that road, but it's a necessity. I lean more towards the tennis courts. We talked about that last year. Those are heavily used. The ballfields are heavily used. Parking has always been an issue out there. I know one of my colleagues has concern about taking some of the green space out there, but, you know, this, this serves our rec baseball league that continues to grow. Very proud of the way that the the city in Matt McHart have grown that program, and we've got to keep up with it because we're servicing over, you know, 1,500 kids a year is fantastic, but we got to keep up with that. So those are my thoughts on, on that list.
I'm going to pay for $600,000 road.
I, I will note, for your information, that the, there's a debt service and tax increment financing debt model closer to the end of the budget packet. And those models include everything in this CIP, and all the park projects are included in the TIF model. That's traditionally how we funded some of these more significant park projects. So for your information that's in there now, it can give you an idea of how it impacts, you know, how it impacts that TIF valuation, and I think what I know, what I, I shouldn't, not what I think, what I did note in the council, in my memo, was that You know, how it impacts that TIF valuation. And I think what I know, what I, I shouldn't say that, but I think what I did note in the council, in my memo was that over the, you know, the course of the next decade or so, we see that TIP valuation going down. Uh, which means it's shifting over to our general fund tax valuation. That's a good thing. And then, of course, on the opposite spectrum, we see that debt service number uh, ratcheting them up a bit as some of these projects, such as the police department, a future city hall, a future fire station would be funded with general obligation bonds.
The problem I have with TIF at times is that it doesn't generate any income on its own. Project like this, it doesn't pay property taxes.
Right, our, the, the general justification for that is that, you know, TIF is an economic development tool and putting money into parks is certainly economic development in terms of uh, the, the um tournaments and, and people that we bring into town. But you're, that's very true, Terry. It's, there's, there's no TIF being generated with these projects.
But you're right, Ryan. It's, it's one of few things that bring outsiders here all summer long, every weekend. You know, that's why we only have one hotel. We, we've got to have the draws. We've got to have the facilities to bring outsiders here to spend the money, um, Mayor. Um, and that, you know, this, this ball field complex has really been one of the bigger ones that draws people in.
And we generally don't use TIF funding for many things besides roads uh, either. So while those are um, certainly no economic development, it's a quality of life, um, safety. Uh, getting people safely from, from point A to point B as well. So I like the model, Ryan. I really uh, was glad to see that in there uh, and and showing us how TIF has been reducing and and what we're able to do um, with the, with the G O bonding and um, Brent was uh, Brent was spot on in the thinking. Um, you know, not to, not to uh, uh, to repeat this again, but this Centennial Road feels like it must have, uh, it's, it's, it's a roadblock right now for us, pardon the pun, and we need we need to figure out a way to do that. So um, I'll just leave it at that. I think uh, whether we pay for it with uh, with TIF or whether we pay for it with G O, it's more effective to pay for it with G O um, than it is with TIF. And I think um, keeping that TIF fund um, used for um, roads, uh, as we've traditionally done, is, is a great use. Um, and we will have this franchise fee discussion uh, in a few months. And I think once we take a look at uh, what this year has done from a revenue standpoint, uh, with the contemplated higher um, tax rate that, that we may put in place. Um, couple that with the franchise fee, we can start to pick off those next items on that parks list.
What I was hearing Brent talk about was the ball field complexes.
Right, I am too. I'm talking about, I'm, I'm not uh, it, it's Penn Meadows Parking Lot, uh, resurfacing extension of it. And the ball field lights right now don't feel like must haves. They feel like nice to haves. Uh, and so they would be a next year conversation for me.
Okay, so you still like to go for the community park, um, Centennial Park Road?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Brian?
Uh, I think that, you know, the, the fixing the trail by Keystone, I think is a safety issue. Um, you know, a couple of years ago, um, Coroville, they, they paid out a lot of money for somebody who got hurt on a trail. And, and that person, he was a nice person, and her life was really, you know, significantly altered just because of, you know, just something that, you know, people didn't particularly at the time think about. So we've been pretty good about that. So I think of the staff feels that needs to get taken care of as a safety issue. I think we need to just put that right at the top. I think the little um, the little miniature sidewalk to the playground is what we also need to do. Uh, Guy, do you, is the parking lot, the current Penn Meadows Parking Lot, huh, you know, how is that doing overall as versus, you know, not resurfacing that and then going ahead and adding some parking spots, or does it just make no sense to do it that way?
Well, the existing parking lot is getting to the point where um, we're having to patch it yearly. Um, we could keep patching it. It would sure night, be nice to have some additional parking, of course. Maybe that might not be a bad idea to have that additional parking while we're repairing the old one. That's an idea. But we're gonna have to really think about here soon, repairing that parking lot.
Okay. So I, I'm, think that the tennis courts, I think we should go ahead and get that done too. The pickleball thing is a, is a thing. There's, I couldn't believe how many people really play that. And then regular tennis as well. So I think, you know, we, they've come and talked to us every, every once in a while and stuff. So I think we need to get going on that. The ball lights, ball field lights, it's just way too much money to spend right now if we're gonna put the trail around Centennial Park. I think that we need to get the road around Centennial Park because that's kind of the roadblock to getting the rest of the stuff done. And we kind of go, that would be kind of my uh, preference right off the bat.
Just a comment on the tennis court. It is getting to the point where it does need to be resurfaced as far as the coating and some cracks fixed. So this would actually be a really good time to transfer it over to pickleball. And I, I noticed just for clarification, Ryan has two courts, uh, pickleball courts, but it actually be providing four because you can set up four on two tennis courts.
And I know Rukisha was gonna chime in here in just a second. I forgot to um, mention that I agree with Brian and the um, Forever Green Trail uh, and the tennis courts. I uh, those were not on the relooping um, memo there, but I completely agree. Uh, tennis courts and the um, the trail for safety purposes.
Rukisha?
Yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, so as I listen and, and continue to go back and look at this list in terms of what seems important. Yes, all of them uh, seem great because we know that the ball fields continue to get used a lot. Um, and it does bring in a lot of people and and youth and families to use that area. Um, Brian pointed out something, and if, and I agree with it, that maybe possibly expanding the parking lot may be a, a great option. And then just re, and continue to patch the parking lot until we can um, resurface. That would be an option. I too think that prolonging the road, although that's a big a great cost, I think is, is going to hinder us from moving forward and getting things out as Centennial Park done. So I would also look at ways in which we could get that going um, sooner rather than uh, later and continue to, instead of continuing to push that off. Um, I do not think that the ball field lights are like a priority right now. Um, and with the tennis courts being resurfaced and being able to use as pickleball courts, pickleball is picking up and it's not just older people just in pickleball, but younger people are um, tuning in and to pickleball too. So I also think that resurfacing those, the tennis courts and adding the pickleball courts would be a, a great addition to that as well. And worth um, us investing in right now. Um, and it was something else, the trails, knowing that our trails out here get used a lot too. And addressing where, you know, there's water and, and um, the things that's happening over on that trail to be taken care of. Um, I would also like to see those, the trails be um, exo-grad Keystone, living near there.
Thank you.
Guy, was there ever something with that uh, Forever Green Road Trail where it was improperly put in, or there's, there was something that went wrong? I mean, what, what has caused that? Is there something we can go back to that would assist in the cost of the repair of that section?
Um, actually, this section has a couple of, of current problems. It had been in the C I P to replace that section because the concrete had laterally cracked in multiple areas with a lot of trip hazards. So we were gonna replace it anyway. But now, since all the development there and the way people graded their backyards, um, all that drainage just seeps out of the hillside all summer long, all winter long. It freezes in the wintertime. And in the summertime, it gets that mossy slime on it. And we've had people slip on it because of that. And we have to go out there and try to broom that off like weekly. Um, so there's a couple of issues there. Um, it's gonna be pretty important that we take care of that one.
And, and that's a great uh, liability too. And we don't, we don't want to have that and people getting hurt um, out there. So it will be very important to take care of that.
Yeah, if I can add to that too, uh, Brent, that was installed by the developer uh, for the original Fox Valley subdivision.
That's correct.
Well, there's really no one for us to go back on.
Thanks, Kevin. And I, I would, I would agree with consensus here on that one. Um, it's uh, you know, not that long ago, uh, we went around town uh, and serviced uh, and made people fix their sidewalks. Uh, we should fix our own.
I have, here's just kind of an FYI. It, it does appear that over time, that developer-based or installed trails do not last as long as the ones that we do. I don't know if it's the concrete they use, but that's just something I have noticed over time.
I, I'm sure that is true, because I already see some of the stuff on Forever Green Road falling apart, so.
Mayor, uh, do you want to continue down the list, or do you wanna? Do you want to spend more time on this and, and get a consensus on this, or?
Well, I think I'm basically know where people stand on this one. So go ahead, keep going.
Okay, uh, the final two projects I wanted to just touch on tonight, uh, Michael, I've, I've asked Michael to be here for and Kevin as well. Uh, the one is one you're all familiar with, that's Dubuque Street. We're currently designing uh, that project and intend to uh, uh, intend to construct that uh, in F Y twenty-two, unless of course you're, you're, you changed uh, direction on us here. Uh, we, this one, you might recall, we asked to start designing early because of the significant acquisitions involved. Uh, and so uh, we're, we're moving forward with that uh, as we speak. Um, I guess, I don't know if Kevin or Michael have anything to add, you know, if there are any other um, points that Council would like to make.
Uh, I do not. We're, we're finished with the design process and we're just, we're shelving it for the acquisitions and easements and relocations to take place. And we're planning on bidding it. We haven't decided yet. It's either gonna be late fall or early winter if it moves forward.
Michael, anything to say on this project?
Uh, no, I, I don't really have much for a comment on it. Um, it looks like a great design, uh, a great improvement to the area, so.
So refresh my memory, when Dubuque Street hits the intersection of Front Street, what is the endgame on that? What are you trying to actually do?
Well, Front Street gets vacated. So that short segment between Dubuque and Cherry will be vacated, and there'll be a driveway off of Cherry to serve um, the garage to the, to the left or to the, to the west and the bike shop to the east. And that road, Dubuque Street, will curve, and that will become North Front Street up to the roundabout. So it'll be a straight shot. And then North Dubuque Street, uh, if you're coming from Reds, that will tee in to this new curved street. So we will, will no longer have any of the skewed intersections.
Fighting for years coming off of Front Street to try to get on the Dubuque Street. You have to look, play pass some shoulders and see if anybody.
Yeah, you really gotta crank your head. Uh, that, that's always been a problem. Uh, another benefit to this project is it opens up more ground for the civic campus. So um, um, we see that as a big plus, be more green space available.
Kevin, it also improves drainage in the area.
Yes, we also, exactly. Um, I was gonna touch on that, uh, as you guys were talking about a potential move for the city hall. Um, we're only gonna have to deal with a little over two acres of water now because of this project. Uh, I was kind of scrambling and, and looking at some contours while you guys were discussing, and there's about, there's over ten acres uh, in Penn Meadows Park on the west side that we would have to deal with if a building was put over there. So that's, if you want to talk about that later, but that will be an issue.
So the kind of issues I'm looking for?
Yeah.
Mayor, haven't we had issue in the past with some of those homeowners and the church back there with runoff from the park going into those uh, houses? Haven't we had legal issue with the water runoff back there anyway? Where if we put a building there and did work, we would be even more so inclined uh, to be blamed for water issues over there?
Imagine it's a possibility, yeah. But Kevin, what do you think?
Yeah, there, there haven't been any legal issues that, at least that I'm aware of. I know there've been concerns because you get a lot of water. If you guys have seen that after a really heavy rain event, there's a lot of water that goes through there. And actually, when you were talking about expanding the parking lots, Guy and I, I have already discussed this. And if we were to, to expand the parking lot there, we were planning on using permeable pavers. So it infiltrate in the ground. And then we were gonna run a tile line from the, the new expanded parking lot up to Penn Street to the storm sewer. Looks like we have enough depth to do that, get a small tile line to take some of that water away from going between those houses and up to Penn Street and the storm sewer. So that's how we're planning on handling that with the parking lots.
Does that answer a question, Brett?
Yes, sir. I, I like that a lot.
Okay, so I think what I hear is we'll keep moving forward on, on the Dubuque Street and the acquisitions and, and uh, get ready to bid that this winter or fa, uh, late fall, as Kevin mentioned. Uh, the last project that I wanted to call your attention to is one that is already included in the operating budget. Uh, but it, and it, and it's, you know, it's, it's not a park project. It's, it's not very fun, but it's, it's crucial. And I thought it was important that Michael talk a little bit about uh, some of the sewer lining we're doing where we're having to repair, going and repair uh, or rehabilitate uh, old, uh, some older sewer lines uh, because of the gases that are accumulating in there. And I've probably already jumbled it up enough. I'll defer it to the rest of it to Michael so he can uh, talk you through a little bit of what, what we're doing.
Uh, so what we determined was on the West Trunk Sewer Line, it, it's fed by three different lift stations. Those lift stations were producing high levels of hydrogen sulfite from the waste. Um, coming from those lift stations. And the, the original pipe was twenty-four inch um, concrete piping that was lined with um, uh, tar epoxy, and it didn't hold up. We did some Cameron investigation on it. Um, typically that pipe's um, like a four inch thick concrete. And in some areas, we were down to, to an inch or less. Um, you could see the rebar lining and it were that hydrogen sulfite gases had eaten away at the pipe. Um, so in discussion with, with Ryan um, and staff, uh, we determined that we needed to replace this or repair this pipe within a, a quick timeframe so that um, it wouldn't interrupt the service the, of that system. Um, so this would be year five, finishing up a five-year process that started in seventeen. And um, I think this year is eighteen hundred feet, I believe, line. Uh, total line would be at the completion of the project would be just under seven thousand feet.
And Michael, can you explain what you mean by lining?
Yeah, so the um, you may have seen the, the trucks out there doing it, but they, they put a membrane ba, bag. It's a special bag that they put through the, the current sewer system. They have to bypass pump it to do um, a cure process for it's uh, I think it's like twenty-four hours that they kind of bake this resin in this bag. And it takes the form of the pipe. And once cured, finally cured, then it um, it's its own structure. The old uh, piping that was there is, is not significant. It, it's self-support, self-supporting on its own. Um, so it's, it's, it's like laying new pipe, but without all the, the destruction of, of digging up and the proper, dealing with the property owners and, and um, you know, reseeding and, and just a lot of time, energy and money that would, that would go into that. And we're able to do this without having to wait or have a potential break or And we're able to do this without having to wait or have a potential break or a a collapse. So it's just um, it was, it was a good catch and and it was an unfortunate um thing that we found out that the these gases are eating that, but uh we know um know that any lift stations, uh, any piping down from lift stations have to be protected and we require that when they're built.
Thanks, Michael, and again, not really, uh, I guess this is our, like I mentioned, this is already in the the wastewater budget, but I I did think you know, the, some of these are, you know, we're spending a hundred and eighty-five thousand, it's a big chunk, but it's also you know, it's it's really a, it's 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 so important to to maintain the integrity of the system, so appreciate the overview there, Michael. So that really concludes the projects I wanted to talk about. Uh, the others that that you see here are already um really in the operating budgets. Uh, I guess at this point, uh, I I still would like some consensus or some direction on going back to, uh, you know, starting up at the fire truck and really the fire truck and the park projects are or where we need some some direction. So Mayor, I don't know how you wanna, how you wanna do that, uh.
From what I'm hearing this evening, the Park Road, Centennial Park Road appears to be what I hear should do. Am I correct on hearing that? So again, I I come back to you folks and say, are you gonna fund it? You wanna do GO, do you wanna do TIF, franchise is not available to us yet?
I think if we're looking at that one particular project, Mayor, that GO is the most effective way to pay for it, uh, it's dollars that we have and and we get more bang for those dollars uh and and not impacted as much as if we were using TIF.
Of our opinions?
I I just wanna, I just wanna reiterate, right now it's shown in the TIF model. And if we change it to the GO model, it will have an impact on that tax levy, just so, just so we're all understanding that.
Thank you, Ryan, I apologize for that, I misunderstood that, so keeping it where it is right now uh and this model, I think that's, that doesn't skew other things and because we have a couple of other things probably to to figure out, so thanks for that clarification.
What say the rest of you?
Yeah, I'm, I agree with Chris, it's kind of set in there that way and uh, we but we really need to get this thing going because, you know, we need to have that in place that we can do a lot of other stuff in the future, so.
I agree, I think we should move forward with it.
Okay.
I also agree, Mayor, and I, you know, I I come back to the conversations that we've had about possible grant funding or fundraising for other things out there, um, but the infrastructure's gotta be there for us to be able to do those.
Okay. I think we have a good direction on that one. What about the Truck for Chief Plot, what's your opinion on that?
Uh, it's my uh thought on it that if if there's a safety consideration for the firefighters, then I think that it needs to get done. If it's gonna be close to middle of next year ended, well, after the first of the year, I'm wondering if we can't uh look into putting some of it in this year and then part of it into the next fiscal budget and then getting it in July, I think we did that with something else, did we not?
Uh, we probably, I I'm not, I'm not sure what you are, what project you're referring to, we may have, but in this case, if I could be so blunt and say it really doesn't matter, uh, because our borrowing is always a year plus behind and so while we might pay for this with cash on hand, it's not, you're not, it's not gonna impact, uh, it's not gonna impact anything, it it just makes more sense to pay for it and take that savings and then continue it in our borrowing schedule down the road, uh, if in fact we would need to borrow for all of it.
So if we proceed with it now and just put the money aside, we actually may have enough money next year by the time it shows up.
It's one way to look at it.
Yeah, but I mean, if we, if we are saying, okay, we're gonna, we're um, we're gonna use, we want to use some of FY twenty's allocation and we're we're rolling the dice on FY twenty-one's allocation, yeah, there's a potential there. Uh, and that's why it's night, that's another reason why we like to delay that borrowing because, you know, we can, we can um if if that funding is available later, we can we can do that, and in fact, I think we did that with a dog park where we said, okay, instead of borrowing money for this, let's throw, I think it was a hundred thousand or something like that of surplus money at it and and take, take away that borrowing, so yeah, that's an option.
Chris, what do you think?
Brian, I commend you on the um funding tap dance uh that you do and and I was lucky enough to keep up with everything Ryan was saying. Um, Chief, you uh, you had me when it was a personnel safety issue because uh, it's not something I could have uh weighing on my conscience, so um, if you say that that's uh, that's of a high concern, then I'm I'm gonna trust you on that.
I appreciate that, if I could comment, um, right now, we're very reluctant to let a lot of our new drivers uh sit behind the wheel of that truck. Uh, we just um, with the limited amount of experience they have driving fire apparatus, we're just not, not comfortable um with them driving that truck, so we we are restricting uh due to the fact of just how it operates right now.
So what I'm hearing is use some of our surplus allocation for at least half of the truck payment and then we gamble on how things can turn out next year.
That's kind of what I think.
Fair enough, so to be clear, if if we get to F, if we get to that FY twenty-one surplus and there's nothing there, uh, then we would have to borrow for that or 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 look to see where our general or capital fund is at.
Yes.
Of a couple of options.
Understand, because I think coming down the pipe, Chief, I think some of your self-contained appr- breathing apparatus is gonna be replaced as well.
Yes.
And how much does that price tag?
Right now, that's a uh air compressor cascade SCBA, SCBA fill station for seventy-five thousand dollars next year.
Chief, I would, I would say, um, and you, you know, your, your father would know uh more than I, but uh those types of projects are pretty easily funded uh through the firefighter grant process typically uh at that level.
Yeah, we did make one attempt at that uh two or three years ago uh with no success, but um, certainly, we all know that those guidance documents change and that might have been a year they weren't targeting those things, but yeah, you're right, I know a lot of departments that have been able to secure uh that stuff through federal grants, so um, that's something we can certainly look at, might save us down the road. Thank you.
So Ryan, would it be fair?
Go ahead, Brian. Brian, go ahead.
Would it be fair, Ryan, to say that to put in, you know, commit a hundred fifty thousand dollars of the surplus money and of this year and then and then next spring, we'll see where we're at.
Okay.
That's what the group would like, we can do it easily.
Thanks, what I'm, what I'm hearing, seeing heads shake.
Yeah.
What else, Ryan?
Uh, okay, so um, uh, we have the Penn Meadows Projects, the Centennial Shelter, and I think we understand the trails ago, uh, if I got everybody right, but we have the, so you have the tennis courts, the two parking, the existing and new and uh the ball field lights in the shelter at Centennial, I guess, just looking for for some direction on those.
I think that's gonna have to depend upon the uh franchise fee discussions.
Yeah, I think the only thing that we might let go through on this one besides Centennial Park was the um uh, the tennis courts, uh, it was a smaller dollar amount. Um, you'd be, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think holding off on the Penn Meadow parking lots, um, and yeah, just, just not those, but getting, getting the tennis courts resurfaced.
How would you feel about using the surplus then? We're using one fifty, we have four hundred sitting out there, one fifty for the truck and throw another hundred at the tennis courts. Uh, would that be feasible or that be um adequate for folks?
One-shot dollar would be perfect for it.
Yeah.
Then it would be done and.
Yeah, then we can start on that right away as well.
Yep.
And so if I'm.
And then the trail repaired though, right?
Yeah, I I mentioned that, I believe everyone was a go on that.
Yes.
So uh, we can have, so that helps, that's tremendous, I think I've got what I need. Because it sounds like we're gonna come back and talk about those other projects.
With what's left.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we can have that conversation as soon as you all like and the mayor and I can maybe talk about that in our weekly meeting to to see when you wanna to have that schedule, I did. I I'm sure you all saw, I I put a summary in there of uh, in this budget packet on um what a franchise fee would generate at different increments and how it would impact, in this case, I, because every home is different, um, every usage is different, I just, I I looked at my bills for the past twelve months and that's what you're seeing there uh, is a sample, uh, I mean, we can't do that obviously for every home and there's really no average and so that's what you're you're looking at. Okay.
Thing is, everybody uses the utilities, one word of the other.
That's a great point, yeah.
Ryan, if you could, as you uh generate that uh to bring it to council, one thing I'd be interested in seeing from the League of Cities, I'm sure they could generate it quite easily, is the list of cities alphabetically that use it, what they generate, what their percentages are, I I think that'll be really useful.
Yeah, we we actually have that list already, Brent, we don't have what they generate, we, but we have their percentage.
It is interesting.
Yeah, we can certainly um provide that.
That's a good point to all to bring up, thanks, Brian.
So Mayor, um, if I could just take two minutes here, I think, first of all, I appreciate again everyone's participation in this, I think there's been a lot of great work done both from a staff level and and the council level in terms of the budget. The, 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 I guess the point I want to make is with the new laws, um, a budget approval requires four fifths of the city council to approve it, and so um, and and that anytime a city generates more than Tracy, is it two percent? Two percent of the revenue from the previous year, it requires four fifths, so in our case, I mean, even if the, oddly enough, even if a tax rate went down, but the valuation went up and your revenues still went up two percent, it would require four fifths, so uh in this case, obviously our tax rate is proposed to go up, revenues are going up as well. And so at the end of the day, it's gonna require four out of five of you to to vote in the affirmative to pass this budget.
Doesn't it take also two hearings?
It does, Tracy, I'm gonna speak.
That's what they need to know too.
The max levy hearing is the first and that will be at the second meeting in February. And then the final budget adoption will be the first meeting in March.
Okay. Ryan, anything else you got?
No, sir.
Anything else in regards to the capital improvements you wanna consider? We didn't hear from Shelley, what's what new with you, Shelley? Did you have some projects you wanted to talk about?
Uh, no, not really, uh, whatever's listed as, you know, on all the CIPs is pretty much, uh, like I mentioned, I think at the last budget meeting is as the facility ages, you'll see some of those expenses coming through.
Okay, just wanted to give you a chance there while you were there.
Well, I I appreciate that and I invited Shelley just in case any of those came back up, I will note that um you know, we have seventy thousand allocated for the pool heater, we just got some information today on that. Uh, uh, there, that's gonna be a a big expense, more than seventy thousand.
Ooh.
We're still evaluating options, uh, we just got information today, so we'll, we'll be back in touch with this group. Uh, but it's, it sounds like it's it's more complicated than just a heater, so we're, we'll be in touch though.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, folks, in this? Okay, moving ahead, the consent agenda is before you. Anything on that list you wanna pull out and talk about before we move on it?
I just had a question about the change order for the misplaced uh sewer pipe or whatever that was.
Yeah, that's um, so a little bit of confusion there, um, we shared some costs on on that uh piece, we uh, a map that we used to provide the contractor with this, where the sewer was, was inaccurate, so they connected to a a pipe that um we inadvertently identified. Uh, but then there was some other uh costs to that project where they agreed to share, so that's the difference between between it.
If nothing else, a motion to approve the consent agenda being in order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. City engineer report. Kevin?
Okay, thank you. Very short report. We had another meeting with the DOT last week. Um, we're continuing our planning efforts and coordination between the DOT and North Liberty for the new interchange at Penn Street. That's going along fine, there's really nothing new, I don't know if you remember last time, but um that could be let as early as the summer of twenty twenty-four. Southwest Growth Utilities, that's going slow, uh mainly because of the weather. Um, they have mobilized some equipment onto the Jones Boulevard and access and they're planning on installing some force main in between two segments that they've already installed, so that would make that connection. And then uh, lastly, St. Andrews Drive, that one will be closing out very soon, we're just waiting on one item that has now been completed. Uh, it was a part they were waiting on and then we just got uh the final signed change order from the contractor. Uh, Metro Pavers for liquidated damages, that was uh for late completion, so they did sign that, so that should be closing pretty soon. And then that's it, unless you guys have questions.
Questions for Kevin? Thanks, Kevin. Ryan?
Thank you, a couple of things, uh, also quick though, uh, I sent an email out earlier this evening about tours for the Guide Link Center. Uh, Matt Miller uh spoke yesterday at the the joint meeting and and uh is excited to to uh provide tours of that facility, so if you would take a look at that, let me know if any times that we're proposing work and we'll get that that set up, uh, we are uh propose, or we are, uh, we will have the the final payment uh for that project. You might remember we we pledged five hundred thousand and and as the project progressed, we made uh four installments, uh, four payment installments, and so the final one will be uh on the first meeting in February. Uh, also sent you an email on an upcoming Icade Investor Council meeting, uh, it's a great opportunity to to can hear uh about a program they've uh been working on and um uh better understand how uh Icade is is helping uh the area, uh, if you're available, it's free, I I hope you can sign up and and join. And then finally, uh, kind of a neat uh program we're we're participating in, it's called Go Red for Women and and uh you may have heard of this program already, it's an American Heart Association education campaign for women, for heart disease for women. And they've asked us if we have any uh red lights uh that we can light up in the month of February and of course we have uh some lights on our, on our bridge on Rancho Way, so we'll light those uh in red all month for February in honor of Go Red for Women, Iowa City, uh, and Corvillo are also participating in this and we'll have various lights throughout their communities uh lit in red and um uh our communications department will also do a little publicity on this as well, so kind of a a neat uh, a neat thing we can do with with those lights on the bridge. That's my report.
Any questions for Ryan? Thank you. My report, uh, MPO meeting tomorrow evening. Uh, then also the governor will be at the Guide Link Center on Friday morning. I've been asked to attend, so I'll be going to that. But again, I really encourage the council, if you wanna take a tour of it, let Ryan know we can line something up, I'm sure. So it's a big step for all the communities around us. Civic Campus. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight. Resolution approving the services agreement between the City of North Liberty Resolution approving the services agreement between the City of North Liberty and Shive Hattery Inc. For the City Hall project. Anybody want to review that ahead of time or ask question? If not, a call for motion to remove the resolution?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any final discussion or questions? Please take my role, Tracy.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Resolution passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Item ten. Rancho Way Phase Five. Grant, I'm going to defer to you to tell us what we're doing.
Sure, thanks. Uh, before you have a resolution, uh, the, as promised from our previous meeting, where we have one resolution instead of a, a series of them uh, for the various properties that we've negotiated acquisitions for uh, for this project. I believe there are five uh, in front of you this time. There, we have a couple more uh, coming down the pipe for our next meeting uh, that are, are not the, not quite ready, but uh, nothing to add to these. I recommend approval for all of them. I think, I think these are all uh, at appraised value or, or just slightly over. And there, it's a reasonable, reasonable uh, path to move over here.
Any questions for Grant beforehand?
Yeah, thank you for doing all that.
Okay, so we have resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine. Resolution approving the purchase of real property, permanent and temporary easements for various property owners adjacent to Rancho Way for the Rancho Way Phase Five project. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or question? Tracy, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Resolution passes for affirmative, none opposed, one absent. Old business. New business.
I just, I did get to go to the, well, the online version of the joint meeting and stuff. So uh, a lot of interesting projects uh, coming along with Coroville and their interchange uh, on First Avenue, which will be interesting. Uh, hopefully they'll be done a little sooner than, actually the other one will be done at eighty and three eighty. And uh, appreciate the mayor's insight on the COVID vaccine, uh, added a little bit of clarity to the situation. For older folks, so.
Other items? Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our agenda this evening. Thank you for your work and input. Appreciate it. Meeting is adjourned.